Gentlemen, and we're opening up this evening with the Truth in Taxation Public Hearing. I call the hearing to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Daeney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. And let the record show, trustee Aaron's is present. We will turn it over to you Valerie if you want to give us an up and a down on the taxation. Don't worry soccer players, it won't take that long hopefully.
You'll need to listen closely you guys. This hearing is for the public input for the 2015 Village of Bartlett property tax levy. We have been discussing this tax levy over the last several minutes or meetings. And to recap, the proposed village board property tax levy totals $9,265,478. The general corporate and police pension levy have decreased 2.03 percent from the 2014 extension. The death service levy has decreased as well, 1.03 percent. So in total, the levy has decreased $174,334 or 1.85 percent from 2014. The 2015 tax rates from Cook and DuPage counties will be determined in the spring of 2016 when both counties finalize their equalized assessed valuations for the 2015 tax levy. The levy itself will be presented to the village board on December 15th for final approval. The levy will then be filed with each county clerk no later than December 19th of this year. So if there's any further questions the board has, we certainly are prepared to answer them.
Well, just for public clarification, I just want to reiterate the fact that even though this wording starts off saying that a proposed property tax levy increase for the Village of Bartlett in 2015, that is not correct. It is a decrease for the public record, correct?
Right. We think that it probably will stay pretty well stable. It's a decrease, but the counties always add on that loss factor, which means it will be a stable one.
Which, the whole point of even mentioning is that someone might read that and say, "Oh, our property taxes went up, there's an increase," where in fact, it did not go up. We actually lowered it. Good.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Is there any public testimony written or oral from the crowd? Hearing done, I will entertain an motion to adjourn the taxation public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Carbonero. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for December 1st, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Daeney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We've requested Pastor Andy Doyle to do our invocation this evening. Pastor Doyle?
Let's bow our heads as I pray. Father God, we come to you tonight asking for your blessing upon our meeting. Father God, I pray for a blessing upon each person here, Lord, that they may prosper in all they do. And Father, I pray a blessing upon everyone who calls Bartlett their home, Lord God. I pray that they would reach their full potential in all spheres of life, Lord, that they would be good neighbors and had positive influence in their homes, in their communities, and in all their spheres of influence. That the Village of Bartlett may be a jewel in the crown of Illinois. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Doyle. Now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In light of our break that we'll be taking this evening, the board does not have an issue, I'm going to move Town Hall to in front of the president's report. If anybody would like to address the board, they can do so prior to our break. Does anybody have any issues with that? Okay. Moving right along, we move down to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered enacted by one motion. There will be no additional discussion on these items with an asterisk. Does anybody want to include anything in the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add item 12A1, the zoning text amendment to increase the fence height from three to four feet.
I'd prefer to discuss that.
Okay. We'll leave that out. All right. If nobody wants, obviously there's anything else to add. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes for the public hearing, board and committee minutes from November 17th, 2015. It includes the bill list from December 1st, 2015, and it also includes the Public Works Committee Sprint Cell Tower License Agreement Amendment.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Daeney, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is the Town Hall Meeting. So at this point in the meeting, if anyone would like to address the board for any reason, I ask you to please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. If anybody would like to address the board at this time.
My name is Gail Batoff, 1426 Quincy Bridge Court in Bartlett.
Can't hear you.
Gail Batoff?
Okay.
1426 Quincy Bridge Court in Bartlett. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do this evening is submit to you a petition from quite a few residents of both the area surrounding and also the Chesterbrook School regarding the possible Bannerman's Bar and Grill. I've been looking through board minutes, I've talked with board people, and I don't see an approval, yet I keep hearing that it has passed and the project is going forward, which is causing a lot of concern for the school community as well as the residential community. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I'd like to submit these to you this evening.
Anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. Michael Worden, 431 South Main Street, Bartlett. Regarding the fence variation, I have sat on the zoning board for the last 36 years, and a lot of variations have come before us, which I think could be easily taken care of if we would adjust that. I was always in favor of like three and a half feet, and it was pointed out to me that people usually have specialty designs and so forth, and they come in increments of one foot or more, so 42 inches would not be real practical. So I'm in favor of a four-foot fence. I think especially if you're going along a sidewalk or something where there might be a hedge and you can't tell what's on the other side, whether it's somebody or a big dog. It's a little bit harder for somebody or person or anything to go over a four-foot fence than it is a three-foot fence. And a lot of times, the people that have a reason for wanting a higher fence is the safety of their children or to keep their dog in. And I have a neighbor next door that has a small lab, and he's so glad to see me, I have a three-foot fence, and from a standing position, he can just hop right over it. And she used to have a little Shih Tzu who became mine because after a while, he would put his front hands, notice I say hands, not paws, I'm a dog lover, on the fence, and he would just climb right over. He never climbed the other way. So I think a four-foot fence in the side yard especially is more practical than a three-foot fence, and I'm glad to see this finally come to fruition.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Hearing done, we'll move next item on our agenda is the president's report. I have a proclamation and one recognition. Proclamation is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month, December 2015. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed 924 people in Illinois during 2014, to apropos that we have a bunch of high school students here this evening, whereas hundreds of those deaths involved a driver impaired by alcohol or other drugs, and whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving. And whereas for thousands of families across the state and nation, the holidays are a time to remember with loved ones lost. And whereas organizations across the state and nation are joined with the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired driving law enforcement efforts. And whereas the Village of Bartlett is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in an effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim December 2015 as Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the Village of Bartlett, and do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, and healthcare providers, schools, and public and private institutions, to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidences of impaired driving, and promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year, dated this first day of December 2015. Next, I'd like to recognize a few people in the audience. I think the superintendent of U46, Tony Sanders, is here, I believe, and Principal Dr. Richard Lebron is here, yes, and athletic director Jeff Brawl is here. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for coming out. Next, I'd like to issue a recognition for the village, this village proclamation to congratulate the Bartlett High School Hawks soccer team on its winning season. And as soon as I'm done reading this, we will have a short break for some refreshments and cake. So whereas the young men on the 2015 Bartlett High School Hawks soccer team and their coach, Vince DiNuzzo, started their season with the sights set on turning around a struggling program, and whereas the teamwork and talent, along with the unstoppable energy and enthusiasm with which these 25 boys played, earned them not only a winning season, but multiple records, and the program's first-ever trip to state, where they hoisted a fourth-place trophy. And whereas this Bartlett Hawks team finished the year with 17, 9, and 2 overall, and 4-0 and 1 in the Upstate 8 Valley Division, winning its first conference title and posting a record for wins in a single season. And whereas five of the 16 seniors on the team, Oliver Salee, Tim Riordan, TJ Ivkovich, Venici Leone, and Josh Merkel were named all-conference midfielder. Midfielder Salee also was named all-conference, and Riordan was with a record-setting 13 goals in the season, was named all-sectional. Salee was also named all-state. And whereas the determination and drive of these Bartlett Hawks put Bartlett High School boys soccer on the map, and additionally put renewed excitement and pride into the hearts of their fans in our village. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook County, DuPage, and Kane Counties, do hereby congratulate and applaud the Bartlett High School Hawks on their flawless footwork and spot-on kicks, and I furthermore call upon all Bartlett residents to cheer these fierce competitors and the unforgettable season they gave us. Thank you. A lighter in the crowd, but it's okay. They did a really good job this evening. I'm glad that we were able to recognize them. You know, they all worked really hard. Having a struggle for a long time and then coming back to where they were at, I thought it was definitely deserving of recognition, so that was good. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is questions, answers from board. I would, I guess just it might be a good time to recognize the chief and a trip down for a Kalia award. If you can give us a two-minute update on the Kalia certification that recently placed. I know we'll have something coming up in the future.
Yeah, and we look forward to doing a formal presentation to the board when the actual award comes, but we are honored and pleased to announce that we sent a cadre of representatives, including the mayor, down to Miami for the International Kalia Conference, which stands for the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. As approximately 3 percent of law enforcement agencies internationally are considered an accredited agency, of that 3 percent, about 1 percent of the 3 percent has received recognition of accreditation with excellence, and we were honored to receive both, our reaccreditation and the excellence award. So it's quite a process, it's an arduous process, and it was nice to do as well as we did.
Yeah.
It's not only reflective of the police department, it's reflective of the entire staff and the board and the commitment of the trustees as well, and the entire community.
Thank you, Chief. I know that was really an impressive display of how, just how we do stack up with other police agencies around the country, and it was, I can tell the board that we're in really, really good hands. So thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Answer? Hearing done, we'll move on to the Standing Committee reports this evening. The first Standing Committee reporter is under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item, the zoning ordinance text amendment to increase the fence height from three feet to four feet in the residential districts in the front and corner side yards. So to get the ball rolling, I think what I'll do is I'll move to approve. I move the passage of ordinance 2015 dash?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. An ordinance amending the Bartlett zoning ordinance to allow four-foot height fences in the front and corner side yards in the residential zoning districts.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Daeney. Is there any discussion?
I do have an objection to the four-foot fence in front of, or on the, the front of the houses. If you can imagine looking down a street, and perhaps every single house has decided to put up a fence along their front setback. Excuse me. I think it's not going to look good. I think it's going to look, you know, I know the whole thing about good fences make good neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. I think it will make the street look cavernous. If you've ever driven down, and I don't know what other one to use, but Nerdy Road, where all the houses have four-foot fences on the backside, because Nerdy is a heavily traveled road, and it does, it looks cavernous. In addition, let me think a minute because now I forgot already. I don't know why, to be honest, I don't know why we even brought it up. In this information that staff has provided, we have an approval rate of 83 percent for a four-foot fence. We've had 18 requests since 1990. Now that's less than one request per year. Why are we changing, why are we changing it? It doesn't seem to be a problem. And so for that reason, I would look unfavorably for the, at the side yard, I believe that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But for the front, no. So I'll have to vote no.
Jim, how many people come in and request a four-foot fence that they're not able to get, and they just think it's just too much paperwork? So they just back down from even applying?
Usually, they'll request four, five, or six, and most of the time, as this indicates, as TL just stated, with the four-foot fence, we had 18, and there was, you know, a couple of those were denied, but 83 percent of those 18 were approved. But it's more, this was initiated by the zoning board because we, people will always ask us, can I put up a bigger fence? And we say no, and then they do decide not to go through the variance process and end up putting the three-footers, and that's what we hear a lot. And then the zoning board felt, and we tried this once before, a number of years ago, you may recall, and that didn't get anywhere, but this year, they initiated it again and went through the process, because we do get requests, and people are kind of usually asking for four, or five, or six foot in those areas. And we've got the stats here that show it. So you're right, there's been 18 that have been approved out of the last several years, but there's been some that just don't do it, and they go to the three-foot. They say it's not worth it, let's just put a three-footer in.
I have a tendency to agree with trustee Aaron's as far as the way that it will look. I just don't see, when I'm running around town, I don't see that many front yard fences. But if it's four-foot, it can look pretty.
You have a few, but it's, you're right, it isn't a regular thing. But it could, you know, if you get a bunch of them in a row, it would look like TL has stated. You have a few in Amber Grove, that's where I tend to see them, and sometimes people don't want to put them in the front yard, and they just still put them at the building line and then along the side yard. But this ordinance is not, does not regulate it that way. It regulates just the height throughout the front and side yard.
So this really isn't occurring, is, the, asking for the variance is not really occurring that often? That's what it boils down to?
Usually the, yeah, well, you've got, I mean, we had 54 petitions since 1990.
1990.
Yeah. And most of the time, I mean, the breakouts, you know, 18 for four, 20 for five, and 17 for six-footers. It's just something that has occurred over the past.
Well, I think that the ZBA put a great deal of effort into this, in analyzing this, and so did staff, and I would have to agree with the recommendation that, from the, or at the request of the ZBA, and I would be in favor of this ordinance. They see it on a regular basis. You know, we're looking at this, you know, I'm looking at this type of thing for the first time, but I have a lot of confidence in the efforts that they put into this, and I would concur with the ZBA.
Any other discussion? Absolutely.
Mike, I don't want you to think that, Michael Worden is the chairman of the ZBA, I don't want you to think that I don't think you guys did a fine job on this.
If there's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonero?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
No.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is under the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have on our agenda this evening under Standing Committee reports is License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaron's. Or, I'm sorry, Finance and Golf Chairman Daeney.
Mr. President, we have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Daeney. Next we have License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaron's.
I'll have no report.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. The next item we have is under Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Chairman Carbonero. Finally, on our Standing Committee reports is Public Works Committee Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The one thing we did have has been put under the consent agenda, and we are good to go.
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Brings us to new business. Is there any new business anybody would like to address at this time?
Yes, I have a concern that was brought to me by a resident, that I would like for the village to start thinking about how we can develop policy on it, and I talked with Jim earlier. Apparently, we have a coyote problem in the village, and this resident came to me and complained that her dog was taken by the coyote and killed, and her neighbor's dog was taken by the coyote and killed. And then the third house next to them was also in a, had a, the bigger dog got in a fight with a coyote and survived, but from what I've been told. So the concern becomes, when we're talking about fences and things, that, you know, with small children, if a coyote is jumping these fences, which apparently it has been, and taking dogs, then what would happen if you had a small child in the backyard, and would that be a potential safety risk? And I know, after talking with Jim, we really don't have a policy, and I don't know what we can as a village come up with or do about that. Obviously, we can't shoot them, we don't have firearms and village limits, although the state has an open season on coyotes. So it's, you know, that's not that, it could be that DuPage County could come in and trap them, or Cook County, or whoever, in a humane way, but I do think we need to have something put down, a policy of some sort, so that it doesn't come back to haunt us someday if something should happen with an infant or a child of some sort.
Let's take a look at that and see.
Okay. Thank you.
We lost a cat some time ago. A coyote, yeah. Of course, I thought that was funny.
Yeah.
A cat lover. Or we could, the chief could probably figure out something with his guys, that'd be a...
I can tell you neither DuPage County...
Those guys are smiling back there. They're saying, "Okay, we can take care of that problem."
No, they're not. Thank you. Actually, Cook County, DuPage County do not have trapping policies. They won't do it. They've done a lot of research on this, as a matter of fact, across the country. Hazing is recommended with coyotes, not trapping or killing the coyotes. Coyotes tend to be very territorial. They're here, just like raccoons and skunks and other jurisdictions, they worry about sharks, or bears, or mountain lions, or whatever, it's just part of the community, and hazing's always recommended. The problem with coyotes is they're territorial, and if you trap, and they tend to breed to the population that's appropriate for the food source. Once you start trapping, you'll get another pack that'll move in, and you actually, by trapping, you actually...
trapping, you actually, it's been the experience in many jurisdictions that they have more coyotes, because they're not as competitive, and that you weaken one pack, and another pack will actually move into that to dominate the food source. You actually double the population by trapping. So we've researched this over the years, because it is kind of a scary thought, that a child in the backyard or whatever, and we ask the neighbors and the residents to report that when it happens. Coyotes are sighted often in this town. There's a lot of forest preserve, there's a lot of paths, but we haven't seen, there hadn't been any reports of aggression towards humans. However, this is the time of year where you can lose a small dog, because they're reestablishing their territory, and this is the, I'm sorry, the breeding season, so they become very territorial towards other canines, and they will grab a small dog. So, yeah, we've tweeted on this on a regular basis, put out public information that now is the time to have your dogs on a short leash, especially if they're small, and to monitor your children, as you always should anyways.
So do you know if state policy supersedes county policy?
The state, I don't know anybody from the state that's going to come in and trap in your town, but I will research that for you, I just don't think they do that. You're right, there is an open season on coyotes, they're considered fur bearers, and you can get a trapping permit through the state, but those tend to be out in very isolated areas. You don't usually see that occurring in jurisdictions such as ours, where you're more likely to lose a dog than a coyote.
Maybe we could bring in a Road Runner.
What area were these coyotes?
Where was it, Mike?
Yeah, what area?
Over by Devon and Prospect, off that area. Further, oh, well, kind of where the, what street?
Newport.
Newport, where Newport and Devon kind of meet back in there.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Any other new business?
And just to finalize, we can research what other communities have done in our area, and I can report back to you. We also have a nature center in town that we direct a lot of folks to, and they have some good resources and tips for residents as well.
If all else fails, buy a bigger dog. Any question at this point? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll be moving right into the committee hall meeting for the village.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Cammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.